It went over.
I'm sorry.
It went overtime.
It went over.
We'll jump right into our regular meeting.
All right, here we go.
I'll call a regular meeting of USD 431, September 11th, meeting to order. Roll call. All present. Agenda. We did make a couple minor changes.
Correct. We added number four, opportunity for visitors. And that's the only, that's the only change.
I move to adopt the agenda, or approve the agenda as presented, or as amended, sorry.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Opportunity for visitors, ladies.
That's us, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for being patient with us tonight.
Yes, I'm just gonna stand. So, we're from the League of Women Voters, and my name's Janice Walker. And where did Jan go?
I'm here.
Yeah. Jan Steis is here.
Yeah.
I'm the president of the league, and Jan is vice president. And today, we wanted to introduce ourselves and talk about the league, which she's passing out, she's passing out our priorities. We have these every year. And she's also passing out some bookmarks that are suffragists. Want to talk a little bit about the league and the candidate forum and the reflector, the Kansas Reflector. Well, I moved to Kansas in 2000. My folks are in Linsburg. They retired there. My dad went to Bethany College, my brother did. And I see Berger Sanzane paintings out here. That's pretty special. My dad remembers him when he went to college there in the 1930s. So, I've been here since 2000. I retired from Larned State Hospital in 2011. I was the accreditation officer. They hired me over the phone. I lived in Northern California for 25 years and came back here to be with my folks. They've since passed. Jan moved out about three years ago from Denver, because she's got relatives right in Great Bend. So, take a real quick look at our priorities here. We are all about empowering voters and empowering democracy and, of course, understanding the issues. So, we've got reproductive rights here. We've got water and climate change we're concerned about. In the middle is all about voting rights. We are all about voting access to and understanding what you're voting on. We are nonpartisan. We don't suggest people to vote for or parties. And you can see, we've looked at redistricting, same-day registration. And at the bottom, elect the president by popular vote. As we look on the other priorities, talk about the Supreme Court there. Equitable tax system, mental health, foster care, abolition of the death penalty. On the very back, we are for can-care expansion, government transparency, and we're concerned about criminal and youth justice. So, this comes out every year. It comes out a little different depending on what's going on politically. Now, a little bit about the league and how long we've been operating. So, you know the suffragists. Took them 72 years to work through the system to get women the right to vote. Women's suffrage in 1920. That was 72 years ago. 72 years it took them when they first started in about 1858 at Seneca Falls, New York. So, all of these are suffragists from the Kansas area. As you look on the back, in the middle, 1912, Kansas had their women voting for everything, including president of the United States. We were eight years ahead of the 1920 for the nationwide. Kansas was very progressive at the time. And the suffragists, under Carrie Chapman Cat, one of the leaders, they turned into the League of Women Voters after women got the right. They wanted to be sure people had access to voting and understood the issues. So, who's got Jane Brooks? Okay. The very first league in the whole nation was in?
1919.
Was in Kansas.
In 1919?
Uh huh.
Okay.
The very first league in the United States was in Kansas. Wichita, Kansas. How about that? We're progressive. So, keep these bookmarks. They're for you. One thing the league does is put on candidate forums, and we're a new board. Our older board, actually, some members died, a couple of them, and COVID. And members weren't, the older members weren't keeping up with electronics. And I'm trying, okay? I'm trying to keep up with QR codes and attachments. And so, our new board's been in effect since about three years. And we've had, this is our third candidate forum coming up. And did you get this in your email?
Yes.
Great. And so, we have a lot of local candidates running, so many that we're having a forum in Great Bend, October 5th, and Hoysington and Claflin here, October 12th, at the Friendship House. So, I've talked with Kathy Kopp. And the candidates, the positions are listed here. We've heard from eight people so far in the Hoysington and Claflin area. And Jessica, you've gotten all the emails. Okay, and you too, Rebecca?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, good. And are you two able to come?
I think so.
You think so?
Not sure yet.
Okay, you can just send me a text or email. That would be great. And Neil, you can't make it, and Katie Patterson can't make it. So, we'd like as many there as possible as a contested race. And you all have two questions to answer. And when all the questions are done, there's gonna be free time to mingle with the, get out from behind the table and mingle with the, with the audience. And we'll have some refreshments, some cookies, and maybe some water and some tea. We want it to be comfortable for you and for the audience. It's our first time at the Friendship House. Have you all been there? Okay, well, very good. And the second thing I sent off to Patrick, he was the only email I had, so thank you, is the Kansas Reflector. And you got that as well, right? And they're a newspaper, nonprofit, and they try to keep tabs on what's happening in the legislature. And they're gonna meet at the front door, and that is a city office on 10th Street in Great Bend, kinda more toward the eastern, east side of Great Bend. It's where I go in and pay my water bill. And they are going to talk about that Marion County Record Newspaper that was raided and the holes. That's pretty concerning for us all, and so they'll probably be taking questions from the audience. Is there any questions you have for me? We're always looking for members for the league. So, I'm just gonna leave this here. Maybe Rose can take it.
Yep.
Our membership is $60 a year. That's $5 a month. And when you join this, the local league, we also, you join the state league and you join the national league. We're all one voice. And we do pay dues. A lot of it goes to the national and the state, and that comes back to us in grants and resources. I'm also gonna leave a couple of these that Rose can deal with. We are not registering people on paper like we used to for the last three years. We have a suit against the state of Kansas, as well as some other nonprofits. A bill was passed that if we impersonate an election official, we could go to jail on a certain felony level and be fined hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, instead of getting the registration forms from the election office and going into the high schools and helping them and then taking them back to the courthouse, we don't do that. There's the QR codes. They can register themselves online. And so, we pass these out at the high schools, senior classes, social studies. And we're getting ready to visit the high schools, because every year, we have National Voter Registration Day. It's on a certain Tuesday, like the 4th, and it's September 19th this year. So far, I've only contacted Great Bend. And Great Bend organizes us for the whole day. Jen and I have gone the last two years, and we have to take two days to recover. We are there for eight sessions, talking to eight different classes. We're exhausted. I don't know how these teachers do it. And thank you all for your leadership for the schools. It's greatly appreciated. This year, we, we have nine leagues, and we're the furthest west league, Great Bend. There's no more leagues beyond us like Dr. City or Garden City. It's just hard to keep, you know, groups going. But Topeka League developed a video, a PowerPoint presentation with a video for high schools. And so, we're gonna use that this year, so we're not talking so much and getting exhausted. Great Bend organizes us for the whole day, and I haven't contacted Hoysington, Ellenwood, and Claflin yet for any visits. We'll do it more towards the end of the month and maybe some in October. It's busy for us with visiting the schools and then doing the candidate forums and it's a busy, it's a busy fall. And wasn't that rain nice today? It was really perfect. Jan, do you have anything you wanna ask?
Nope, just look forward to seeing you at our candidate forums.
Yeah. And thank you. Thank you all for having us today.
All right, thank you for coming. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item five, district strategic plan.
Just a reminder to go through and take a look at the strategic plan. This is an updated version of our strategic plan. We'll talk about it a little bit later, you know, some of the work that the administrators have done, but just some, you know, some reminders, community, teacher, and student support, develop and collaborate learning culture, environment that fosters a healthy and thriving district community. Retention and recruitment, develop a culture of support that encourages innovation and engagement of high-quality staff in communications and accountability. Improve and maintain effective communications to promote awareness for support and transparency. So, I appreciate the work that we've done on this so far, and our admin team has done, done an incredible job of working on those outcomes, and we'll talk about that later.
Patrick and I had discussed about keeping that as an agenda item, just so that we try to help keep or focus on that strategic plan as we go through our meetings. So, appreciate that. Item six, consent agenda. Mr. Graves?
Consent agenda is pretty self-explanatory. Cash balance report is on there as regular. I did wanna point out a couple things on the cash balance report. We don't like to see the negatives, but they are sometimes unnecessary. Our title funds, we are requesting title funds from the state, so that, that will be taken care of, and that is a fund that's federal, which allows us to go negative, because we ask, we spend the money, and then we ask for the money in reimbursement for that. Gifts and grants is another one of those that typically we spend the money and then we ask for that in reimbursement. So, those two funds, as well as Title II, are in the negative, and that's okay. It's not, it's, it's, we just only ask for that periodically. We don't necessarily do that all the time. The other one that I wanted to point out was the activities, cash balance report. The one that I was able to get to run, you'll notice that there's a lot of funds there. The ones that are in parentheses actually means that that's a positive. I know those of you that have a little bit more of an accounting mind, the parentheses typically is a negative, but this reported actually is positive. And I, I worked on it for, I worked on it for two hours, and I can't get the account descriptions to show up. We broke out the accounts into more detailed accounting by fund, by activity. And so, each one of those numbers over to the far right-hand side of the big, long 56Q, 9541000, that three-digit number over to the far right-hand side is each one of those individual funds. So, so I'm still working on getting that accounting to show up correctly. So, again, I apologize, but the activities funds are very healthy, and I appreciate Mr. Mason and Mr. Drumguard and Mr. Kraft and Mr. Flowers, all helping to oversee those funds as well, to, to help make sure they don't go into the negative.
Anybody have any questions on any of the items in the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item seven, new business, changes to the calendar.
Okay, the reason for the change for the calendar is typically, we only have a regional in-service every other year. And this was, this was the year not to have the regional in-service. And so, we scheduled school on President's Day, and we scheduled an in-service on Martin Luther King Day. After the USA Conference, the, the schools in our league put together a regional in-service. And so, my suggestion is that we have a full school day on Martin Luther King Day, and we have an in-service day with no school on President's Day. So, it would be taking those two days and just flip-flopping them. When I presented this to the calendar committee, the, the comments that I got from the calendar committee was, this is a great idea. Why didn't we have an in-service day in February anyway? Because if you look at our calendar, there's no in-services in February at all. And so, the, I presented it to the calendar committee, and they have agreed to, they have agreed that this is a good idea. So, now, the final step is to come to you, that I would, I would like to recommend that we flip-flop those two days now, so that we can publicize that in multiple, multiple ways, so that we can make sure parents are aware of those changes. Questions, comments?
I move to modify the USD 431 2023-24 calendar as presented. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we modify the 2023-24 calendar as presented. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Item B, approval of site council members.
It's one of our main goals to get our site councils back up and going at the building level. So, for the first three quarters of the school year, we would like those site councils to be able to meet, discuss items that might be changing in the buildings. And then, this would also be a sounding board that, at the end of the year, in the spring, we would try to bring the whole site council together and meet as one large group, as a district site council, and discuss things like our building needs assessment and other items that we may be wanting to change as a district. So, I would recommend that you approve the, the site council members, all of these people, or the administration has contacted all of these people as well, so they, they are aware of this.
But this isn't the, aren't the only members?
Right now, they are.
As of right now.
Yeah.
But that will, could be a larger group in each building.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I move to approve the building's site council members as presented. Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the building's site council members as presented. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item C, superintendent evaluation tool.
This is a recommendation, and this, this item may sound like, sound like it's coming out of left field, and that, that's fine. And if you choose to, to table that, that's okay too. The, the idea, the idea has been, there's two, there's two evaluations. So, the one evaluation, which is the original evaluation, is the one that we have always used. I have put it into a Google form for your electronic use. I did my self-evaluation on this Google form. The other one, the E Conversation, three and four, that is a superintendent evaluation that was been, that has been developed by USA Kansas, KASB, and a collaboration amongst them and some other people. It's more of a cycle, which would, which would be the direction that I would like to see us move. We don't necessarily have to use this tool. We could continue to use the tool we've always had. But if you take a look at the, the cycle that has been kinda put together, move towards that cycle, so that the evaluation is not necessarily a one-time event that takes place, but a series of events that takes place throughout the year, so that it's not just a hit-you-all-at-once type of situation. That's why I chose to do a self-evaluation this year, to have, to start that conversation. So, if you choose to, we can move to the different one. I did not do my self-evaluation on the E, on the E Conversation, or the Conversation Driven Performance Evaluation. Or you could choose to table this and have more discussion, and we can look at it at a later date. So, that's totally up to you. If you have questions, I'd be more than happy to field any questions that you've got.
Questions? Sarah, you, you and I went to training a long time ago about all this.
Long time ago.
I think I'll stay neutral, 'cause I don't have to do another one of these. So, it's up to the new board to figure out which ones you wanna do, so.
I think I would like to take a little bit more time and just be able to look at them a little bit more in detail, if that's okay.
That's perfectly fine with me.
I would agree. So, table it until next month, around the month, or, you know, we'll just table it till next month.
Okay, okay.
All right, we can, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Item eight, old business, June 2023, KSB recommended policy updates.
Might need to get a bottle of water. We can start at the beginning. You know, policy AG, closing of school buildings. That's been revised. This policy was updated to reflect the changes in the building closure procedure is outlined in House Bill 2138, Section 3. This one, actually, we need to, we need to go ahead and approve this, because it is state law effective January 1 of 2024. This one is the one that gives the state legislature first right of refusal in closing a building. So, if we did choose to close a building, there would be some procedures that we would have to go through in, in terms of that. Policy GAF, emergency safety interventions. This actually has cleaned up a lot of the emergency intervention policies that we've been using, I would probably say around five years. So, this, this actually does clarify and clean up some of this policy, and I would suggest we approve that as well. GAOA, drug-free workplace revised, technical change to remove repeated language that was not needed. So, I would recommend that we approve this one as well. GARID, military leave. This policy is updated to align with the applicable federal regulations. Again, I would recommend we approve this one. GBQA, reduction of teaching staff. This policy was updated to clarify whether language of the professional agreement or the policy would be applicable. Again, this aligns with, with what we have had in the past, just cleans up the language, and I would recommend we approve that. IFCC, overnight accommodations. This, again, ties to State Statute 21, House Bill 2138. This is created to outline the requirements for overnight accommodations for students during district-sponsored travel. This will not change anything that we've done. This basically states that students will stay in the room with their same gender, which is the policy that we've always had in place. JBC, enrollment. This policy was revised to remove language regarding non-resident students due to changes in state law. Provisions regarding non-resident students are now in policy JBBC. So, I would recommend that we go ahead and pass that to go ahead and, and move forward with preparation for JBBC. I will refrain from going through JBBC now, because that's, that's another piece that we need to talk about, and we will not approve this one tonight anyway, due to some other things. JGFGA, administration of emergency opioid, opioid agnostics. This is the, this is the policy that we discussed last month concerning the distribution as needed of Narcan. I did some, I did quite a bit more research and evaluation. I was not trying to, to go against the recommendation of, of the two of you. I did have somebody reach out to me. Kelsey Burkey reached out to me and was a proponent of going ahead and passing this. We are one of the few districts that have not passed this in this area. The use of Narcan has been found to be pretty safe. And when I say pretty safe, Kelsey indicated that when a, when a person is brought into the emergency room and they are unconscious, they will go ahead and, and give that patient a Narcan, just in case that it is an opioid-related issue. So, it does not affect or does not harm a, a patient if it's not an opioid, opioid-related issue. I have found trainings to go ahead and distribute to the people that we would have, you know, giving this, so that we would have record that those people have been trained. And then, we have Narcan, and we can get new Narcan from the state for free. So, this has been a discussion that we've had, and I wanna open that one up and make sure that I'm not stepping on anybody's toes. But everything that I've read and been told from experts in the field have been that it's relatively safe if we need to.
I guess I kinda changed my mind after that discussion and talking to some of the other medical people, that they feel it's a good policy to have, so. I had some questions earlier, but kind of on their recommendations, I think probably we need to go, and what Great Bend last year had in instance, that they had, had to, had to use it, so.
And if they hadn't, I mean, yeah, they said they don't know if...
And if they hadn't, I mean, yeah, they said they don't know if, you know, the student would have made it or not.
Uh, I was told also that all of our teachers that have had, um, their new first aid training. This is included in first aid training as well. So it's, it's just part of the first aid training that they get, so.
Everybody comfortable with that?
I'm fine with it as long as the training's there and they understand what the criteria is. I mean, you know, as long as they're trained.
As long as they're trained and we have documentation.
Know what they're doing.
Okay.
So will you have like, you want a couple of people in each building or just as many people?
So all, all of our teachers that have first aid will have that training, um, but then we'll train our secretaries. And all of the admin and our counselors.
Okay, I just didn't know if you were going to limit to, limit, you know.
I mean, we don't.
That would have to be locked up.
Yeah.
So then all of those people will have access to that key and.
Well, and that'll be, that'll be part of the issue is, is access to it.
Right, that'll be something else that you're going to have to kind of think about too is. You don't want everybody in the building.
Good point.
But if it's locked up in the school office, then that limits. To certain people that have access to it, so. I think those details can be worked out.
Other questions on that one, excuse me. Okay, policy J H, student activities. This policy was drafted to reflect the changes in state law regarding. Participation in student activities and athletics by homeschool and part-time students. This is. The Senate Bill one thirteen that Mr. Kraft is, has, um, talked to us about on a couple of occasions. KK disposal of district property. Uh, this policy was amended to reflect the new procedure required prior to the stated district. Sell of a district building. Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna backtrack here. Ultimately giving the state the right of first refusal on purchase of the building. This changes necess- necessated. Necessitated by the passes of House Sub Bill, Senate Bill one thirteen. Section four of the bill, so I apologize. K N complaints. This policy was updated to clarify the role of the appeal officer. When the initial determination in a formal complaint has been repealed. And then finally, J G F G A. Nowoxone incident report. This form was created to in conjunction with policy J G F G A. And should be utilized when the locks, the locks cone or Narcan has been administered on school property. So in result, you know, having documentation of that if it's actually been used. And then, then there's some table of contents issues. My recommendation is to approve all of these with the exception of J B C C. Uh, enrollment of non-resident students. And then we will discuss that one in the next, um, business item. Questions?
I move to approve all of except that J B C C.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we, uh, accept the recommending changes to board policy with the exception of. J B C C as presented. All in favor? Posed, motion carries seven zero. Now, item B, non-resident enrollment policy.
Provided several pieces of information. I've been working with ESDAK. That has been collecting information concerning, um, you know, the, the. Understanding of this non-resident student open enrollment. So there's, there's three documents there, um, talking points, open enrollment information. And I'd like to, to kind of direct your, direct you to that one, the open enrollment information document. As I've, as I've read through this multiple times, uh, finally starting to absorb some of it. That the first time around, we are bound by this law. To pretty much accept anybody that applies. With the exception of if we set a threshold. If we set a limit of how many students per grade. At the lower grade levels, or if we set the limit per building or per program in the secondary levels. Initially, and, and as I've talked about it with the administration initially, my thought process was let's open the doors. We'll take everybody, um, you know, this is kind of, this is kind of. Off the wall, but what if two hundred kids from Great Ben decide they want to come over here and go to school here? Well, we would not have anything set in place that would keep those numbers. To where we would be able to effectively educate those students in the classroom. So we could look at it in terms of our teacher ratio numbers. And make sure that our teacher ratio numbers stay low enough that we feel like it's going to be effective for having. Twenty in a classroom or twenty-two in a classroom, uh, depending on the different levels. With also opening it up enough that we would have room if we have students move in. Or if we do know that we want to accept some students. Then the second year, we have then the opportunity to create that. That criteria or throughout the next year, create criteria that would say. You're a, a non-resident student, but you are not a student in good standing. And so you need to go back to your home, homeschool. Does that make sense? So, so kind of the, the reason I directed you to the open enrollment information. Is this gives a, a pretty good timeline for the next couple of years. So we are in the process of creating the policy right now. So that's the timeline, summer, fall of twenty twenty-three. We are actually working on this policy and, and, and I'll get into some more detail about that. Here in the next segment. Then on or before May first, so probably during our April board meeting. We will need to set our capacities, our district capacities and our admin team. We will bring to you what we feel is, is, um. Is a quality or a, a good district capacity for, for, for our students. Then on or before June one, we will have, um, district capacities posted on our website. June one to June thirtieth, non-resident students will have, will have the window to apply. On or before July fifteenth, non-residents. Will go through the random lottery selection process completed and denied students enrolled must be notified. So. If we reach the capacity, then it will be a lottery. So if we have five open slots. And we have seven kids apply, all of those seven kids in third grade. Get put into a hat and we draw out five to fill our slots. Does that make sense?
Now, if they're non-resident students that are already enrolled here. Do they fall back into that lottery then, or are they grandfathered in the state?
I believe they're grandfathered in, but I'm going to have to do some clarification on that. Cause that's where we would run into more of an issue. Yeah. So I believe those are going to be grandfathered in is my initial thought, but I'm still working through that process.
So, okay, we have space for five. What if the Joneses move in with two? Does that kick two out of the five? Or do we add two more two?
So that, that's, that's the question and that, that continues to be the question. You know, we have five slots, um, on June one. And then June fifteen, we have a family move in with five kids. Well, at that point in time, we're at capacity and we would not take anybody, or if they have two kids, then we would only take three. But then.
We've already told them that you're.
Right, right. If, and if we do that, and then if a student moves into the district, then that does not count against our capacity. So it, it, we would go over that capacity at that point in time.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it just.
But that doesn't count against capacity.
Right, because they're in district. But, but it, but our, I mean, our, our timeframes don't match up either because, I mean. So like, we're going to set capacity, let's say we set capacity. I mean, we're, we're two months past needing to hire a teacher or three months past needing to hire a teacher for that. So, I mean, I, it, 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 I mean, it just brings up, I mean, I'm sorry. It just frustrates the heck out of me because, because it brings up so many issues. So the only thing, so in writing this policy, the only thing that's been made clear. Is that these deadlines, these dates cannot change. So those dates on the open enrollment information page are dates that are specifically listed within the state statute. And cannot change. So the, the policy can be adjusted and, and that's, that's where. That's where ESDAK is trying to help us. We've got some that. Just, I mean, don't want to open it up at all, just however many kids they've got, that's their capacity. They're not gonna, they're not gonna go above that. All the way over to the other side where they're just going to open up capacity to a thousand and, and just hope for the best. You know, I don't know. I've been an administrator for, you know, seventeen years. In districts that we have a third of our student population, which a hundred and thirty of our students are out of district students. And this has never been an issue. So, I mean, it, it's, it's complicating a matter, um, so I apologize if I'm, if I'm flustered. With this, but every time I read through it, it, it throws out something different to me. The annual deadlines, May one, district capacity determined, June one, district capacity posted on website. Between June one and June thirty, non-resident application window again, and then, you know, the whole cycle starts over again. Then, I mean, we, there is some deadlines and dates in here that we would have to identify. Students that are not in good standing and ask them to leave as well. So that not in good standing is also still up in the air. Um, KSB has recommendations is what they believe is a student not in good standing. But that's also up to you as the local board with recommendations to be able to say. Student not in, is not in good standing if they have so many absences or a percentage of absences. Or so many disciplinary referrals or. You know, there, there's, there's, there's kind of some leeway. We can, we can say, okay, this. Designates a student not in good standing. Um, we can't make it so strenuous that. Nobody can meet it, um, but we still have to, you know, we still have to kind of give that. Give that a, an, an ability to, to meet that, but. So, um, capacity enrollment, um, so that, I mean, so. So the, the goal, let me direct you to another one of those. Open enrollment timeline. This breaks down the next couple of months. So the, my goal is to have a draft policy to you by the next board meeting. Or prior to the next board meeting, so you can review it for the next board meeting. That draft will be looked at and drafted, looked at by you at the next board meeting as a whole. Suggestions, we can look at it again and then by the November board meeting. This policy has to have, has to be published in the news. The policy doesn't need to be, but we will be having a hearing related to this policy. And so we have to do similar to what we've done with our budget hearings. And have a special meeting before the November meeting to pass this policy. Does that, does that even complicate things even more? But, um, uh, but what I would like to do is, is have a draft to you prior to the October meeting. Then, then after the October meeting, we will publish the hearing notice. And then ha- that has to be in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks on the district website and then the newspaper. And then add the policy adoption action to the November board agenda. So. I'm still, I'm still up in the air whether or not we have to have the hearing or whether it can be part of the actual regular meeting. I'll have that clarified by the October meeting. And then at the November meeting, we conduct the hearing. Review and discuss the proposed policy, allow time for public testimony, close the hearing. If ready to adopt, the, the board will then vote to pass the resolution during a regular meeting. I guess that clarifies that for me. If not ready to adopt, then we still do have the December board meeting. To make the final one. So I would like to have all this wrapped up by November, but. We do have December if we absolutely need to, to have December. Clear as mud for everybody? So, uh, again, I mean, every time I read through this, I learn something new. Something that's happened for fifty plus years and. I've never seen it really screwed up this bad, but. So that's just my personal opinion. I should probably keep that to myself, so.
The question is if any of the legislators figure out this what they created. Would be any attempts to rectify some of it.
Oh, no, because they're, they're right. So, sorry, that was probably not very professional either. So, no, I mean, this, this policy's been sitting here for actually two years and nobody's, actually the. The talk among, you know, some superintendents was that they would hope, they hoped that the legislature would. Would figure out that they really screwed something up and get rid of it last legislative session and that didn't happen, so. So.
So what happens if we don't pass this?
Um, we're in violation of state law.
So we can't do what we've been doing that's been working?
I'm still working on that. I, I mean, I don't know.
Because, I mean, it might not affect us, like you said.
Right.
I mean.
Right.
So we could just still continue to say we're doing it the same way, but still have to, still have to, uh, adopt it though.
Right, we still have to adopt a form of it that.
Right.
That, that, that meets the intent of the law and that, that's where. That's, that's been the struggle and, and, and the other struggle has been, how far do you want to push that intent of the law? You know, I, so.
That would be an interesting question to ask KSB is if you don't adopt this, what are the consequences? That's a valid.
Well, I'm just sitting here thinking of our classroom sizes. You know, some of ours could maybe go two or three kids more and not be too much. But if we have to take five more in a classroom, that's really going to be rough, not only for the classroom size, but for the teacher as well.
Right.
You know.
At the example that it would affect our flexibility, that last year we only had two sections of. First grade. And we've added a teacher for this. And we've added a teacher for this year, but then we only have two sections of kindergarten this year. If you set those limits, that potentially could keep you from doing that.
Right, and how many new kindergartners did we end up with?
And that was after the resignation.
Mm-hmm.
Middle age.
So when loo- I mean, in looking at some of our class numbers today, you know, some of our classes have have dropped quite a few, but then, for example, like kindergarten, it's it's up. You know, it's it's not up, you know, over probably what we had before, but our class sizes are bigger too.
Yeah, not all ten of them went into kindergarten cuz we screwed in all any new incoming kindergarteners to our district because we have our two.
And that's what I see everybody's frustration is, what number you estimate you have the first of June is never close to what you have September twentieth.
Right.
You know, there's a massive swing up or down, so. The old days when populations didn't move and kids didn't move. You could, I remember Randy Evans could project that from kindergarten where his graduating class was gonna be twelve years from now and be within five percent. Now you can't even go one one grade level.
Yeah, we we won't know, we'll have a fluctuation after Thanksgiving break. Especially with this year being a full week. We'll have a fluctuation at Thanksgiving break, we'll have that fluctuation after Christmas break, and we'll have a fluctuation after spring break. Because of the trans- transience of of different, different families. So let's, I mean, like, yeah, I mean, we'll we'll have parents in here after Thanksgiving break wanting to enroll their students. It's, I mean, it's just, it's a weird, it's a weird phenomenon that's happened. Um, so, so, okay. Other questions that I can try to find the answer to and get back with you? Um, you know, through our, through our regular communication? Okay, if you do have other questions or you're reading through this information cuz you can't sleep, then, um, please let me know and and I will, I mean, the the first part of, um, next week, um, the focus is to 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 really start to hone in on this policy so I can get it to you. Um, because it's gonna take me a long, a a while to wrap my mind around it to also try to move in the direction, you know, that I I feel like we should go, um, so. And still be within the intent of the of the law, so. So, and I'll ask KSB, and I know the exact attorney that I should ask.
That's an interesting question.
Might as well, I mean.
Some some laws, there's no enforcement authority to it. Others, there's pretty stiff.
Right, so, so I'll I'll be back in touch with you about about both of those, so.
Okay. No other question on that? Go back to item C, strategic plan and goal updates?
So, really proud of the work that the administrative staff did, um, Thursday morning. We have to meet more in the morning, um, because we, they were pretty honed in and focused on that. Um, they took the time and went in and started looking at the outcomes for retention and recruitment. Again, that goal is develop a culture of support and encourages innovation and engagement of high-quality staff. The outcomes we looked at were individualized and meaningful professional development. Continued district technology updates. Fostering mentorship and support for current teaching strategies. Fostering mentorship and support of current teaching strategies. Encouraging, encouraging to continue staff co-care, which is related to our, um, resiliency training that they've been working on for the past year and continuing that. And then promoting of USD four thirty-one by all two future employees. So as we, as we have future employees, we we want that to be a community involvement to, um, basically recruit people to be teachers. Um, we can go out and we can do as much recruiting as we possibly can, but it's gonna, it's gonna take that community support to, um, foster that as well. And then communications, accountability, improve and maintain effective communication to promote awareness of support and transparency. This starts with communi- maintain communication to foster awareness on multiple platforms. When we mention platforms, we're talking about basically any means possible. Um, from our social media, which I know we've talked about, also including that in the website, but also newspaper, um, other newsletters, other things that that are a a way or a means of communication. Not just, I think when we talk about platforms, we think of just social media platforms, we're talking about everything. Any way that we can do that. Uh, this one, appropriate communication from parents with schools. This one's maybe not worded real well, and I'm I'm still working on that wordsmithing of this one. But as we were talking about this, communication is really a two-way street. So we we feel like there are things that we can improve on, but we have really improved on communication from the school to the parents. But if we're communicating from school to the parents to an email address they don't check or isn't valid or a phone number that's not valid, then we're really not making that line of communication anyway. So we would also like communication from our parents to the schools to be able to have correct information. Or also those phone calls, hey, my kid's sick and not wait until two o'clock in the afternoon. Or, you know, just the appropriate communication from parents back to the schools, um, in whatever means, you know, means possible. I think our our, I know our elementary teachers have done a great job of fostering their use of remind and and classroom dojo. So there's a lot of two-way communication taking place there. Um, you know, sometimes, you know, sometimes we don't know that we're not communicating with somebody until they finally get frustrated enough and let us know. And so, um, you know, I think in our new system, things are working. Um, uh, Power School, we're we're working with Power School too to include two numbers that are contacted, not just a singular number that we're communicating with now. Which I think that'll help foster some of that as well, so in case there's a, um, you know, a a parent and a grandparent that we need to be communicating with, we can do that as well. Um, so, just trying to create that two-way communication. And then back to within the building district collaboration pre-K through twelve. And then promotion of USD four thirty-one application as a means of communication. We know that there have been about seven hundred and seventy-five applications downloaded, which if you think about that, that's only about one per student. Um, so, um, we wanna make the the app, we're working on some things with the website to make it easier to use, but promote that app because whether you get the notifications from the all-call system as a text, um, or a phone call, that's pretty limited right now. But if you have the app, that's that anybody can have the app. You know, grandma, grandpa, aunt, uncle, you know, sister, brother, whoever can have the app and have that line of communication as well, so. Um, take some time to read through these, um, I'm trying to wordsmith a couple of them so that they're a little clearer. Um, and then I'll get this back out to everybody so that they can see it. Questions?
No questions, we'll move on. Strategic, uh, item D, project updates?
Okay. Get through these real quick, um. Sorry, looking at my notes real quick. So we had a surprise Friday, um, and I was contacted by, um, McConnell and Associates. This, the track strippers are here. They weren't able to do a whole lot today because of the rain, but they were able to get the lines painted for on the track on, um, Sunday. Um, so all of the main lines are painted on the track and they should finish up probably tomorrow, um, with the track. And at that point in time, we should be done, with the exception of a little bit of dirtwork that we need to do on the southwest side of the track to smooth it out. And then we wanna straighten that driveway up. Um, they made a driveway that kinda curves, um, and kinda jets into our our shot put area. We wanna go ahead and straighten that back up and, uh, make sure that that's all safe to walk on. Uh, so we'll be working on that in the in the days to come. Um, got an update today on our HVAC building control system. It's getting colder, um, so, you know, our concern is that, you know, um, water freezes. So our boiler systems, we want those to be up and running. Um, the company that we originally bid it with, DCS, they have turned over the bid to another company, ES Two, that is able to get it done by January one, which I would imagine that's been pushed back to February. Yeah, thanks, Steve. Um, so, um, but that, uh, those contracts are being finalized, um, to get that done as well. Uh, just a reminder, that's our ESSR money, that's that's a big chunk of ESSR money. Because of changing from one company to the other, they were able to find that the system in the middle school, they'll be able to do some of it, but wouldn't be able to do the whole thing because of the pneumatic system. Um, but that then allows us to put this building and Roosevelt on the bid and have those, um, connected to the system. Um, and that that's kind of a big deal because that way we can see Roosevelt, we can see this this building as well as the high school and the activity center, um, all all-on-one system. And Lincoln will still be a separate system, but, um, but we're not dealing with a boiler system within Lincoln. Um, and we don't wanna mess up Lincoln anymore. I mean, it seems to be running pretty well right now, so. Um, but that should be, I should have some updates on that within the next week. Um, bus eighteen, uh, that is back. Um, we were able to kind of, uh, expedite that process. Uh, if you're, if you're not aware, it was hit by a bus from, um, by Nickerson and, um, broke out two windows. Um, we contacted the gentleman that sold us the bus, he put us in contact with the manufacturer of the windows. They drop shipped those windows to Jeremy's Body Shop last week. Um, Jeremy's Body Shop got them done in a day, and if they wouldn't have been closed on Friday, we would've had it back here. Um, but we had a contingency plan, so, um, we did not have to use that, and so we were able to go get that today. Um, there are a couple of other minor things that we're still ironing out on that bus. Um, because it's the first time it's been in rain since, um, last spring, so, um, then.
Uh, going back to that, I've had several questions cuz we, uh, made arrangements to have a village bus come in, who covers the cost of?
Insurance will cover the cost of that, so, um, we made those arrangements because, um, we were having to alter our, um, normal arrangements. And so I will, I I'm, have sent all of that to insurance to have that covered. And Nickerson's insurance should be the one that covers all of that, so. Um, cuz I mean, it, yeah, that that was, that was a hundred percent their fault, so. Other questions about that? Um, been looking at some of our numbers, oh, wait, that's for later, that's not a project, sorry. Gotta hit on myself, so. Okay, any other questions about any of the projects, so?
Any questions? Have they looking good?
Thank you, I'm pretty proud of of everything that's happened, so.
It looks really nice, you didn't realize how bad the old turf looked until you seen the new one.
Brightness of it.
Yeah, it's turned out really good.
I'm I'm sure Mr. Craft can address it, but I've had several coaches comment that their backs hurt after they were on practice on the old turf and now they they don't have the back problems from practice that they had then. Yeah, so we'll we'll let you expand on that if you would like later, so. Uh, if not, we'll remove to item nine, reports, uh, Roosevelt, Mrs. Walker.
Good evening, um, I'm gonna go back to our, uh, teacher meet and greet that we had uh, right before school start, and we had, um, ninety-one percent of our parents in attendance, so that's awesome. Um, last year, we did, um, circle time with our kids, so I have to give a huge shout out to Mrs. Foxberger cuz she's the one that put this all together. Um, so we go through books every week and we have like a circle time family with kids from different, um, grade levels. And we meet and we read a book and then we go through questions and stuff. And we do this with our TK through first grade students cuz with our split preschool, it's, that's hard, so. Um, so, uh, we're doing that again this year, thank you to Mrs. Foxberger for getting that all going for us again. Um, we had grandparents' day on Friday, this last Friday. Um, I have to thank all of our staff and and the committee, um, for putting everything together and making it run smoothly and successfully, we had a lot of, um, really positive comments about it. So we had, we send out RSVPs cuz we learned after the first year when we were calling Casey's every fifteen minutes to get more cookies, that, oh, let's think smarter, not harder. Um, and so this year, we had, um, two hundred and thirty-one grandparents RSVP back and we had two hundred and thirty in attendance, so that was awesome. Um, the, uh, yeah, we had a, they did a a song and then they got to do a craft with their grandparents and then we had a photo booth for pictures, so. Um, thank you to all the staff, they just jumped right in and and helped.
As a participating grandparent, thank you to all the staff and everybody, it went really well.
Yeah, I heard great compliments, the staff did great, so.
And and I have to brag on the other grandparents because there are students that their grandparents can't be there for whatever reason or.
And actually, this year, we only had fourteen kiddos.
But but if a student didn't have a grandparent, somebody grabbed them and that was their grandparent for the rest of the period and that, we did that with a couple of kids.
Yeah, and we appreciate that very much.
Seemed like the the youngsters didn't feel left out.
Nope, nope, I don't think all, at all. Um, of cour- and we also, we have to thank our our district kitchen because they provided, um, all of the muffins for us, so that was great. We served muffins in the morning and then, uh, muffins in the afternoon cuz we do two different sessions, so. Um, Susan and Audra, um, I wanna thank them cuz they got started on putting up our cork rails, um, in the hallway. So they got started on that over, uh, Labor Day, um, and that just makes it a lot easier for teachers to hang stuff up. We're still trying to figure out how we're gonna get the cork stuck in there. Thinking of spray adhesive, like, we're gonna just glue that stuff down, it'll be there forever, but um, I do wanna thank them cuz they they took it on and, um, we've had those sitting there for a few years, so I appreciate that. Um, Tyler got our our soccer nets put up, we haven't had those for a while. Of course, he went out during recess, so he had many helpers, it was so cute. I walked out there at one point and he's on one side and there were six kids holding up the soccer net so he could zip tie it around, so. Um, he had a lot of help that day, so thank you to him for getting that put up. Um, we started our fast bridge testing, um, today and, uh, we'll continue that on Tuesday and Wednesday. We sent out our ASQ questionnaire link. So that is something that our families in pre-three, pre-four, TK and kindergarten, it's any child that's five or under in our building. So that is a state mandated data that we have to have. So I switched last year to, we always did it by paper, that's a lot of paper, to now the links are posted on our Facebook page. There have been several all calls that have went out about it. We've gotten quite a few back, but we really need everyone's back because we have to have that data for the state, for kindergarten readiness, so. Let's see, Pam Martin, she graciously comes every year. We love having her. She came to the first grade classroom on the twenty-fifth of August and she discussed pollinators. So that was her first session with the first grade kiddos. And then the first graders will go to the Kansas Wetlands Education Center on September twentieth. They've done this for quite a while and it's just a, they go for the morning and go through a bunch of different stations and Pam Martin is out there. So that's always a really good time for them. We are hoping to have Body Venture. I say hoping because it's been a little bit bumpy. We didn't originally get picked for them to be at our school, but I got an email on Thursday asking, they had a school dropout, so I got an email on Thursday asking if we wanted to be added. I was like, absolutely. And then I didn't get another email till today, so we are hoping that we're still in the running. If so, they would be here September twentieth, so that's very, very soon. But Chris and I have been working on it and so we think we've got everything lined out, so if they can come, we're ready to go, so. Sorry, I have a lot tonight, a lot. HEPA meeting is at Lincoln on Monday, September eighteenth at six thirty. We encourage, you know, all of our Roosevelt and Lincoln parents to attend that. It's a great organization that really helps out our schools, so. Admin are going to, I think, I don't know if all of us are, we're supposed to be, attending the ESDEC Crisis Consortium on Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, and that goes with our resilience training, so. And then, so Friday was wonderful for grandparents' day, but it was wonderful for Mr. Crowdes and I because we worked on a grant from the Patterson Family Foundation. And I got an email on Friday that we got a grant for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to go towards our daycare. Very exciting. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Callan, before you start, thank you for filling in as our deputy clerk tonight.
Jumpstart numbers, we finished with seventy overall students, about sixty-six on average each day, so great numbers for that. Jordan has been training us to use the new updated Power School. And then inside of that, we get to learn how to track discipline data a little bit better. It now generates graphs for us that will tell us what times of day, what location students might be struggling in, that can be tracked by admin and teachers, so that's a very valuable tool for us. Very excited to have the opportunity. We'll be attending crisis meetings at ESDEC coming up. We had our annual open house. It went really smoothly and we saw almost every family. Our first day of school, we started with the welcome tunnel for all the students to come in. And then we did a little walk-in songs and some of the teachers choreographed dances. It was pretty good. Sunny got the loudest cheers though when he played his song, so kids just love him. We have been finishing our benchmark testing this week. We started last week for social, emotional, reading and math. It's gone really smoothly thanks to our title teachers and our aides. All of our aides are trained to do that, so we're able to split them all out at once and test them quickly. They'll have to read at least three minutes of passages to each one of us, so it takes quite a bit of time to do that. So just a few left, we're almost up, so looking forward to seeing that data. Mrs. Applegate put a lot of extra work into rolling out groups right at the start of the year, which is something we hadn't done in the past. She used some old data so we could start right away with making progress with those students, so that was exciting to see. We had our Flint Hills music display. They came in and showed the students some instruments and then Mrs. Ball has been working with them. We have thirty-two fifth grade band members signed up, so a great number. Large variety, a lot of trumpets, so it'll be very loud. So looking forward to hearing them make progress. We had our HEPA back to school bash. Thank you to the board members who put on the work for that. They paired it at Labor Day and had great attendance and a lot of good feedback from that. So excited to add that to Labor Day for the kids to have something to do. So thank you to them. Fourth grade will be going to Ag Day, or went to Ag Day. It was a great time. Mr. Crowdes came and served pizza, so thank you for coming. They had a great weather day. Some of our students did some of the displays and presented to them, so that was exciting. The Barton Community College basketball team is coming to eat lunch tomorrow. We'll be excited to have them. Thirteenth is school picture day. Strawbridge will be in for that again. Mung pickup is this Friday, the fifteenth, till six o'clock in our gym. Except for that, we sold a bunch of mungs, so looking forward to that. And thank you to everybody who supported that. The fifth grade is going to the state fair this Thursday. The Farm Bureau sponsors that for us every year and pays for our tickets to go. We'll get to see some of our students and some of their things that they put into the fair, so. Second grade is also visiting the Wetlands for their Wetlands Day. They do different centers for them, that's always fun. We've been having Henry and Ace, two therapy dogs, who are training with Mrs. Nicholson and Mrs. Haxton, starting to train in our building. Luna, as you know, is on a two-year contract and she is here at Lincoln on Thursdays and a different day at the middle school. So she's not there every day, so we coordinate so they don't overlap and we're starting on some of that training. Brooke here in town does training with the dogs and they've been a great addition. The kids ask every day, who's going to be here today? So very exciting, it's nice to have them. Eighteenth is our HEPA meeting at six thirty at Lincoln. My rock wall is complete. It took one day to install. Guy was very quick. If you get a chance to stop by, come by and see it. I've checked out our Facebook page, we've got pictures of it. It's been a lot of fun. Lots of people must be using it because I already had to clean it once, so it's been fun. September nineteenth, from five thirty to seven, is our fall family fun night. We'll be having a family engagement night. There'll be math games and activities. We're going to have a rock wall competition. There'll be some technology involved with some booths and parents getting to do some technology, snacks. We're also providing community resources. We have some different places that are going to come and set up booths just to talk with families about different resources that they offer and services to parents. And then our teacher focus is to have some parent support for parents, such as how to use Class Dojo, how to effectively use your Power School. And we'll have a booth where students can demonstrate how to use Class Link to be able to show their parents how to use that at home. So kind of the focus, we're mixing everything together, fitness, math and parent support all in one, so kind of making it a mixed up night. The twentieth will be our Body Venture, hopefully. Looking forward to that. It's supposed to be new and improved since the last time we had it. If you look online and search it on our, at the KSDE, you can kind of see it. It's pretty neat, or stop by. I think there was a portion you have to crawl though, so be aware. If you come by, it's going to be neat. My secretaries are going to a secretary conference. I call that the worst day of the year because they go and we survive without them, but it makes you really appreciate them. So they'll go, luckily it's a half day for us. We'll make it, but they always give good feedback about that conference. Learn a lot about communicating with, with staff and how to manage certain situations. It's a good one. October fourth is the Claire Barton Medical Center Vaccine Day, so that's it. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Callan. Mr. Brungart, Middle School.
Good evening. Middle School, getting, starting to get into, to the flow and then into the routine of the year. Office referrals are way down compared to last year, so that's a good, good start. It's a testament to the growth and the maturity of our seventh and eighth graders this year. They're doing a good job, doing, making good decisions and doing the right thing. Our sixth graders did a great job of, of picking up the, the routines and, 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 you know, getting their, getting their lockers figured out pretty quickly and, and being able to navigate to the different classes between, you know, being at their lockers on one end, class at different ends, so they're doing a good job with that. So the year's off to a good start. We had our family barbecue on August sixteenth. We had a good turnout. We did things a little differently, as I stated last month. You know, I, I did a little intro first and we did some breakout sessions. Kind of like what Chris is doing with her, her parent, family engagement night. You know, just went over some, some of our expectations, the different policies that we have and, and, and some of the services and things we offer our parents and students that Caitlin did in, in the music room. Thought it went okay. We had people coming in, you know, wh- when, after I started talking, I think because of the pass, it was just kind of a come and go deal. So if we could, you know, tweak that a little bit, I think it'll work even better. But it was really just, you know, trying to get the parents and us together, saying that we're on the same team. We're, we're trying, we're after the same goal, their, their student success and, and, you know, we're here to help and we need your help to, to, to make that happen. We did have Mr. Quaid come in and film my intro and my breakout session along with Caitlin's breakout session. And we do have it up on our website for people to, to watch for those who couldn't make it. So it's out there, you know, just another way to, to foster that communication between us and the parents and, you know, making sure our students have the opportunity to, to, to be successful. With that said, I'd like to give a shout out to Denise Shuey and her staff for getting things prepared. They make all the hamburger patties and get all the cookies and all that stuff for us. Want to thank my teachers and staff for being there, serving the food, cleaning it up, helping students and parents find the lockers in the classrooms. Like I, I told, I told them, you know, my planning's better than it was, but it's not where I want to be, but their adaptability is off the charts. I mean, and I don't know if you can get away from it as, as a middle school. I mean, things, you, you can plan all you want, but in middle school, things just go crazy. And their ability to, to roll with the punches and, and make, get things done is, is, is great. We've also been benchmarking. We have our, we've done our fast bridge benchmarking with math and reading. And we've had to modify some student schedules to get them in, into the classes they need to be in, so we've got that done. Mr. Flowers and I will be out of the district Wednesday and thirty at a leadership conference in Fall River, Kansas. That's east of Wichita, if anybody wants to know. I never knew that place existed till a couple of weeks ago. We're going to work on building relationships, teamwork and team building. Krista Robinson, Kylie Klug and myself went to Scott City last week to observe their, how they do their MTSS. They presented at the USA Conference over the summer. I went to that, that presentation and they were doing things, they're, they're doing their MTS, kind of how we, we structured ours. So I, I thought, rather than me trying to explain it to everybody, what I, you know, trying to re, re, re-go, go through my notes again and, and trying to explain it to them, it would be better if we could just go out there, observe what they do and then come back and present it to all our teachers. And Mr. Crowdes was grateful enough to let us do that. So we went out there, we observed them, we got to see how they do, do their interventions. We got to see what they do for enrichment. And we also had a new opportunity to talk with the teachers and ask questions to get a better understanding of what they do. Their enrichments are, you know, I mean, it's, it's basically whatever the teacher wants to do. For example, one year they had, one of the, the enrichment teachers was talking about measurements and angles and they needed basket, a basketball court painted out on their playground, so they went over the measurements and angles of a basketball court. And then at the end of the nine weeks, they painted the lines on the basketball court. So just things like that to help get students engaged in the learning, learning process and things like that, so. We'll, we'll have, I'll have my, I have our faculty being scheduled for next week and we will go over that with all the other teachers and tweak and revise what we're doing now just to, to make, to make the learning process a little bit better for our students so that they can have the best learning experience possible. Ms. Millsap is, is heading and continuing the Food for Cans program at the middle school. We did this last year and it allows our students to get food bags to take home for the weekend to help, you know, for the nourishment and nutrition over the weekend where, you know, meals may be a little bit less, less available. First delivery will start October fifth. Our middle school athletics is in full swing. Mr. Flowers has his report for you and he's at our, he's at a volleyball triangular right now for us. We're off to a good start there. Kids are working hard, they're learning, they're growing. And, you know, the efforts are going to show out there on the court and field here throughout the, the fall. Our band marched in the Labor Day parade and they will be going to the state fair again with the high school to compete, compete there, so that's exciting. Some important dates that we got coming up, like I said, today we got a try with Central Plains and Russell. Tomorrow, we have a pride meeting. Again, that's our version of the Booster Club and HEPA, you know, just a parent organization to help, help raise, raise money for our kids and, and things that they need. Thirteenth is picture day. That is for school pictures and our fall sports pictures. So we'll be doing that most of the day. The fourteenth, we got cross country at St. John, volleyball and football at home versus Reno Valley. The eighteenth, we got another triangular at home with Ellsworth and Larned. And then seventh grade football, we'll be playing Great Bend here at home. Twenty-first, cross country at Larned, volleyball and football at Lions. Twenty-fifth, a tri, volleyball triangular at home versus Elman and Otis Bison. Those triangles are additions to the schedule from last year. Nick did a good job of going out and finding teams, so our, our volleyball girls, because just the, the duel or the single game with, with our, with the league school, you know, they don't get all, they don't get the max games they can. So Nick went out and found some games for that, so he did a good job with that. And then on the twenty-ninth, we got cross country at Pratt Liberty and volleyball and football at Heston. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Mason.
Good evening. Feel like we're off to a pretty good start at the high school. We have, you know, six new staff members, four teachers, new secretary, new para. So I felt like it was a pretty seamless beginning to the school year. Students, freshman class feels like they're getting acclimated with high school pretty well. Relatively minor discipline issues so far, so it feels like we're off to a really good start. We did have our back to school bash that first Friday of the eighteenth, I think it was. Had a lot of kids show up. Boost Club provides a meal for the kids, play yard games. Moved it inside to the dance about ten minutes early because the mosquitoes were eating the kids alive, so. But I've, I've said it before, but that back school bash dance is my favorite dance of the school year. It's informal, the kids are excited to be back, so that was always fun. As the other principals have said, we do have school pictures tomorrow. Our band is going to the state fair Wednesday, tomorrow's there. Homecoming week is next week already. Mrs. Randolph does a really good job of bringing in college reps and different people to speak with our kids about opportunities for the next step. So for the rest of this month, she has Garden City Community College coming in, NCK, NCK Tech out of Hayes, KE and Washburn. So she does a good job at least once a week, if not twice a week, of presenting and coming in during similar times to talk to our kids. We also have the Claire Barton Clinic, Vaccine Clinic coming to the high school on October fourth. This Labor Day, I, I did open up the high school again on Sunday afternoon and by far, this was the, the most attended Sunday that I've ever had. I, I bet I had at least fifty people show up, at least. The class of seventy-three was there, the class of ninety-three, and then several other trickled in as well, so. So it was actually supposed to be from one to three. But they got put into the Chamber of Commerce pamphlet, that's two to four. So I just opened it one to four and it was busy the whole time, busy the whole time. So it was actually good to see, I got to talk to a lot of people that kind of have connections with that live far away. So that was, it was fun. And I'd like to recognize a lot of the high school kids that did help with Labor Day. Leading up to Labor Day, then also over the weekend, Mrs. Reisner's Community Connections class does a real good job of going out the first couple of weeks of school and helping Karen Baldiga out. Getting stuff set up for the, for Labor Day coming up. And FCLA kids painted all those stars on Main Street as well. Mrs. Williams Leadership Class, then also a lot of our seniors through government class have to get their hours of community service. A lot of them, you probably saw them out and about over the weekend, helping out with different events. So it's, it's, it's good to see those kids out and about and, and helping. I know they're kind of mandated to, I guess, for their grade with government class, but they still get out there and do it. So it's always good to see. So that is all I have for you guys. Any questions? Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Kratus.
Evening, everyone. I mean, as everybody knows, fall sports and activities are full swing. Girls golf, we've got nine girls out. They're doing really well. Coach Hallman being brand new. The girls are, are buying into them. I've heard nothing but good things. And I think it's showing, the girls got second in both varsity tournaments so far. So, you know, they're, they're golfing well. You know, and even some of the younger girls are, are really improving. Girls tennis, 24 out, counting a couple managers. The girls are, are much improved. There are, there are several girls I remember watching two years ago as freshmen and sophomores really struggle. And now they're on the varsity. You know, they're doing really, really, really well. The varsity's competing in three invitationals so far and they got second place, I believe, at the first invitational of the year. And, and they're right there in all the others. JV girls have been busy as well. I think they've, they've been to four events so far. So, and we may be looking to add a few more because we've got so many girls and you can only take so many to, to each event. So trying to maximize, maximize the amount of playing time for those girls so they can continue to get better. Cross country, 16 out between boys and girls, two invitationals so far. Bringing home medals, boys and girls are, they're both, they're both doing great. Boys won the Great Bend invite, which was the first one of the year in their division. It was, it was kind of neat to see the small class kids run with, run with the 5A, 6A kids. And, and I thought, I thought it was a great thing because, you know, it helped push some of our kids a little bit and, and show some of them that they can compete at any level they wanna, they wanna compete at. So, you know, they did, they did very well. The boys also took fourth at Heston and the girls eighth at Heston. Volleyball, got 31 out. They're doing great as well. Varsity sitting seven and three, I believe, right now. We were CKL league runner-up. It was pretty exciting because it seems like every single year it's Smokey Valley and Hillsborough for the championship. I mean, even before, you know, I came to Hoytington, I knew that. It's been that way forever. And those two teams were in third place. It was us versus Halsted. Girls just ran out of, ran out of gas, but they played, they played very, very well. JV girls are rocking it. They won the Nest City Tournament and the Hoytington Tournament. C Team Girls have been able to compete in two tournaments so far. Nest City and then they went to Lions last weekend. They're doing well. I mean, they've won, they've won some matches. I mean, you know, they're, it's a group of pretty much freshman girls and going up against sophomore and junior JV players. And, and they're right there. Coach Livers has nothing but, but great things to say about their progress. Football, we got 38 out. I think we're around three to four managers. It's just been, depending on which week. You know, football team's off to a great start, 2-0. Obviously beat Heston game one, which has been a long time since we've beaten Heston. So they're doing well. JV's one-on-one right now. We beat the snot out of Halsted tonight. So blew them out and shut them out. So, you know, and the, and the, a lot of credit to our JV boys, which is a bunch of freshmen. If anybody knows anything about JV football, you're usually playing a mixture of juniors, sophomores and freshmen. And our boys went out and played very, very well tonight and picked up a win. Debate, Coach Reiser said he had 13 out. I think they're kicking off their season on the 23rd when they go to McPherson. So I, I think that's one of the larger numbers he's had in my time here. So it'll be exciting to see what they're able to accomplish. Cheer, we've got 10 out. Dance, we've got six. So I totaled them all up and we got 141 students out of 215 involved in extracurriculars this fall. That's by far the highest in, in my time here. That's right around 65%. That's outstanding. That's a testament to our, our coaches and our kids. And, and hopefully we can continue that through the, through the winter and spring. So very happy with that, very excited with that. Obviously the more kids we have involved, the easier things go throughout the day in the classroom and everything else. So we'll see moving forward, big upcoming events like Joel mentioned, homecoming. On the 22nd, we host Southwestern Heights. So it should be a, should be a good and hopefully quick one. Then on the 23rd, we've got our varsity volleyball tournament, which ought to be really exciting. There's always a lot of great competition and, and our girls are primed to get themselves on top at that tournament. So it'll, it'll be exciting, very happy, very pleased with everything in, in, in sports activities. I want to thank you guys, the football field. It's been great. I know Dean already brought it up a little bit. Our, our coaches are ecstatic, our kids are ecstatic, middle school and high school. Middle school's been up there, been able to practice up there a couple of times. It is an astronomical noticeable difference. I would encourage you to get out there and walk around on it. It's, that's pretty cool. If you've been on the old one, it's like walking on concrete. The new one's like, you know, walking on a really fluffy carpet. So it's nice. And then it was, it was really cool to see the track today with some lines on it. I'm, it's gonna look awesome when it gets done. I'm excited for, for our track kids to be able to use it and, and our cross country team to be able to use it here this fall for whatever training they need. So anybody have any questions? Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, we'll continue on. Mr. Kratus.
Today I had the opportunity to meet with our counselors. It's been kind of a long time coming. It's been one of this, one of the, the groups of people that are, are so important, but I haven't had a chance to kind of meet with them. And I'm gonna set up regular meetings with them to kind of, you know, foster that relationship with those, with those ladies. Today we talked about our surveys. There's non-academic surveys that we have to make sure we publish information in our website concerning those as well as almost all of them have to be an opt-in now. So our Kansas Communities Care Survey, some of our other surveys that we give. So Jordan has been helping me with another piece of communication with our Power School app. All of our, all of our parents have a Power School login. So that's another form of communication. And Power School has a very simple survey that we can send out and say, we would like your student to participate in the Kansas Communities Care Survey. Would you allow them to do so? And with a simple yes or no, that all can be collected through Power School. So we're, we're learning about that. The counselors are excited about that. That'll help their job be much easier as well. And then we talked about how we're, how we're getting that information out on our website for parents to be able to see what's in that survey and, and how, how that information can be relayed. So they were able to bring up some, some positive things as well. We talked about the, the, the food that they're able to distribute as well, which is, which is a positive program that they've been able to, to really, you know, really foster and, and continue to sustain. And, and I'd like to continue to see that work. So that was a great meeting this morning. And like I said, we're gonna meet about quarterly to, to continue to foster that relationship.
On the food thing, is that something they need help with, community support for?
It's all, it's all sponsored through the Kansas Food Bank. And so there's some, there are certain criteria that, that students have to meet. And there's some paperwork that, that has to be filled out. And some of that was, we discussed it today, some of that criteria has become more stringent. And so they've had to kind of work through what those lists are gonna look like. But it's all, it's all handled and paid for by the Kansas Food Bank. So, but we will sponsor, or we'll continue to foster that however we can as well. Was looking at some numbers. So the budget that we just passed, that, that budget was actually passed and, and those numbers were based on last year's numbers or, or, or the, or the highest of the previous two years' numbers. So we do have some leeway in that, but I do want you to be aware, from last year to this year, our K through 12 numbers are down 36 students. Now, again, that number is based on Power School. And all of the, all of the fluctuation won't be ironed out until September 20th. So I'll, I'll provide you an update on that weekly update, the week of September 20th, as to what our September 20th numbers are. So if you take a look at it, our average class size last year was 56 students. Our average class size this year is 53 students. So just be aware of those numbers, which could then, you know, down the road, begin to deteriorate the, the budget as well. So we'll, we'll, we'll cross those bridges when we get there. And we hope we can foster continued success so that students will, parents will want to, to, to come here. So, boys versus girls, we've got 360 females, 391 males. That's District Y pre-K through 12. So about 31 more males in the system. One area that's been brought up and I want to address publicly, there have been payments that are, that are on and fees that are on our new payment system. The numbers, you know, are showing up on fees above, or when you make a payment above $50, there is a fee on that. The system that we use for that does not charge us anything, but those fees is, are, are how we use or how we pay for that system. There are options as to how those fees are distributed. If you would like me to investigate further, we possibly could take those fees from being assessed to the parents, to being assessed to the district. So I will investigate that and we'll.
And previously they were assessed to the.
To the district. Mm-hmm, yes. So, so, and so the, the parents never knew that there were any fees there. We chose to assess them to the parents this time, thinking that it wasn't a significant amount. And what I'm finding out is that it's more significant than, than what we originally thought. So, so I'll.
Everybody comfortable with him revisiting that?
Okay, so we'll revisit that and I'll come back to, to you with some, some new information. For that, for my report, that's all I've got.
Any questions for Mr. Kratus? If not, any board members' reports? Do they have anything? Legislative, kind of quiet.
Well, I've got two, I've got two pieces of information on the legislative report. I just found out today, the Smokey Hill Legislative Luncheon will be November 9th. If you're interested in attending that, that is in Salina, so November 9th. I don't have an RSVP yet, but I will be getting that soon. And then KSB Region 8 Legislative Listening Tour is Wednesday, September 27th. And I'll send you these dates this week. This is the legislative lobbying group coming around to ask for what should their priorities be? And so that'll, that'll be coming up September 27th. Pratt, at Pratt High School. And that's September 27th from 11:00 AM to 1:00. Lunch will be provided. So if you're interested in either one of those, all RSVP. I'm not sure that I'll, if one of you or more of you want to go to the one in Salina, I will go. But I will probably not choose to go if you guys don't go to that one. Our P, our representatives don't go to that. So, but I will probably try to attend the, the listening tour for KSB this year, so.
Anything else? Not, item 10, consideration of district personnel. I, A, executive session for non-excluded personnel. I move that we go in executive session for 30 minutes pursuant to non-excluded personnel exception under KMA. Person gets to discuss a nomination, resignation and superintendent evaluation with Mr. Kratus present. Meeting resuming at 9:35. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. Pose, motion carries 7-0. I don't know that we need any administrators other than Chris.
I know.
Come back into regular session with the following recommended motions. I move to accept the nomination of Denton Lewis for the position of zero reasons why sponsor.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor. Pose, motion carries 7-0. Move to accept the nomination of Chris Kinman for position of assistant girls golf coach as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor. Pose, motion carries 7-0. I move to accept the nomination of Connor Mooney for a position of technology assistant as presented.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded, any other discussion, all in favor? Pose, motion carried. Think we are done.
I move to adjourn. Second.
Motion made in seconded, all in favor? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much.
They're all going, yes.